Yeah.
Uh, you? No, what they don't know more. My granddaddy always said, "He ain't cheating trying." He ain't cheating, he'll get caught.
I'm sorry.
There you go. There you go.
Left his courtroom.
They're still scheduling you on Tuesdays?
In the mornings.
Yeah.
You'll be present.
Good afternoon.
Politely declined.
Good afternoon, council, Madam Chair. How would welcome our Madam Vice Chair, which are we here? And our Madam Chair of Planning and Zoning Committee. Thank you for having us today. So, we have a presentation about one hundred and sixty-two slides. Should be just in time to get to our three-thirty. I'm kidding, it's the eighth. We will roll.
Whatever it takes.
Rather quickly.
Yeah.
Just know that anything, questions that follow it, you can always reach out to us. We'll be happy to answer those questions as needed. Karen Rennick will be presenting this afternoon. And then we'll also have Chris Anderson and Mr., there it is. Mr. Trundle down there to give us a kind of a legal overview, if you will. And we've tried to put together a comprehensive rundown on what planning process looks like for council with a special emphasis on the council's role. And I think as we roll into this, if you so wish, we'd like to get through the presentation and then open up for questions. But if you feel we need to stop, we are obviously very willing to do that, so.
So this digital is, I don't see it in our folder for today.
You, you will not have that in your folder. It should be emailed to you now.
Okay.
Uh, in your inbox. If, do we have that ready to go, Karen?
I don't know, did it get sent to Nicole?
Okay, Nicole, do you?
If not, I can go.
We're missing all kinds of folks here. Yes, this will be.
We'll get it, we'll be at the end of this.
Yeah, this, we do have this Madam Chair. It is ready to, it should be released rather quickly. If you need a hard copy, we can provide you a hard copy as well. I'm happy, happy to do so.
You know me, I always like to write on the slides.
Yes, ma'am. Did I see Nicole come in?
She.
Okay. Very good, very good.
Sweet.
If you want, yeah, just go ahead and pop in Nicole and get that distributed.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so Karen's going to kick us off this afternoon. And hopefully this is one of several sessions that we'll work on in different areas of the city and council responsibilities that we're hoping to be able to assist in. And Karen, you want to start with us?
Yes. So thank, um, thank you for having us, I'm Karen Rennick. And then Darren did quite a few introductions. Valerie Maluga's the Deputy City Attorney, you might already know her. Um, and then from the planning team, Pam Glaser is a Principal Planner and a Community Planning side of the shop, that's more Plan Chattanooga. And then Brian Schultz is the Director of Development Services. And he is highlighted on this slide because I am presenting on zoning, but Brian and his team do a huge portion of that work. And both the zoning and the subdivision side of the shop. And Brian really is an expert on all things zoning and planning. He's got about twenty years with RPA and then a career before with the state. So I just wanted to say, he is an excellent resource and really, um, he can pop in and correct anything if I say anything incorrect or anything. Okay, so property zoning is the most common forms of regulating development and land use in the U.S. And just, I'll mention a couple of resources. Apparently Memphis became the first city to have zoning regulations in nineteen-twenty-one. And then the following year Knoxville and Chattanooga established planning commissions. So planning in some form or fashion has been around since at least nineteen-twenty-two in Chattanooga. Primary goal of zoning is to avoid, minimize disruptive land use patterns and incompatible land uses. So really back in the day, this was to make sure that a, um, a plant with a smokestack was not built right next to a home. We've certainly evolved since then, um, but this is kind of one of the core reasons for planning. And then we'll see where this comes from. Um, much of this you know, so I'll kind of move quickly. Zoning regulates the use of land in buildings, highs and height and size of buildings, where open spaces, that's really those yards, those front, rear and side yards are, parking, and then other items. It does not address specifically stormwater, street design standards, or anything that would be found in another city code or building or fire code. Um, and one of the intentions.
Can you say that again? It does not include.
It does not include stormwater, street design, building safety, anything that is elsewhere in city code, we are trying not to have in zoning. One of the purposes of the new zoning ordinance was to not conflict or duplicate or reword something else in another development code. And so we spent a lot of time trying to make sure that we had a clean zoning ordinance that either referenced but did not cause a conflict. So they do talk to each other. Good example is the, um, would be a liquor store. There's some language in zoning about that. There's some language in the city's alcohol code about that. So zoning is kind of the nuts and bolts of it, is what you can do on a private property. It's also an implementation tool. And so two examples here are using zoning to implement Plan Chattanooga, which we've talked to quite a few of you about. We need, still need to do some one-on-ones. And then implement housing strategies. And my example here for Plan Chattanooga is, um, we're doing some work with CARDA on some additional, um, what some additional transit planning work looks like. And then the new zoning ordinance has a placeholder for transit-oriented development. The idea that we want to really support transit and, um, and have that development, transit working together to be able to provide options for people who choose or want not to drive or can't drive, along with a high-functioning transit system. So the zoning is going to implement that work, that's something that will be coming. And then housing strategies, this is just a screenshot from a portion of the city's housing action plan. Zoning is a land use regulation and it just notes that land use tools can do certain things, like increase housing supply, although there's certain, there's plenty of other things that zoning does not do. Um, and then you'll be hearing, I think, Darren can, they're going to be hearing about more housing from Nicole and the housing team.
That's true, we did not place it in this presentation because more of the strategy and how we use zoning according to our goals for housing. So this is more of a, the process is to get through the zoning.
And then, yes, so next week at Planning and Zoning Committee, you'll hear about the volunteer incentive program, which council's already passed, which is relating to affordable housing incentives to zoning. Um, and that has gone through Planning Commission, but that is a tool in zoning that is implementing some of the city's policies. So there's two elements to zoning, there's the zoning ordinance and zoning map. This example of the nineteen-twenty-six zoning ordinance we have in our office, just as a reminder, they've been around, it's very, very small. It's just very few pages. Um, we have an even smaller one, but, um, just to say, it's been around for a while.
Do you say small like it's a pocket guy?
Well, one of them is like a kind of a pocket one.
It's right in Darren's alley.
It's very small, very small font and no graphics, but.
No graphics, so they needed a drawing.
Yeah.
Just carries a copy of it. I'm back in the seat for two minutes and here it comes. I like it.
So when we talk, we'll be talking about zoning is those two components and then how each of those can change and really why they would change. Um, and so now we're switching into how, what, how we get the powers of zoning, how the city is able to do zoning and why. And this is, um, this is planning talk, this is not attorney talk. Um, so this is what we as planners are taught about the planning profession. So, um, starting at the top level, zoning powers are really coming from the U.S. Constitution's police powers. And you're to see those police power provisions, um, also in the state laws, but that's really health, safety and welfare. So when we talk about the purpose of zoning or zoning tools as health, safety and welfare, that's coming from the U.S. Constitution, police powers. And so however, there are federal restrictions. So the feds are pushing down those, those powers to the state. There are federal restrictions that say, we are not going to, we're going to override this estate or jurisdiction's ability to do something else. In this case, this is the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which we call RALUPA. Um, and it exempts religious organizations and structures from any zoning or other land use regulation if the regulation would place any substantial burden on the practice of religion. Um, and so this, I thought it was interesting prepping the slide, the Congress passed RALUPA after hearing testimony that land use and zoning regulations often burden religious institutions. And so this is one, when we, um, when we think about religious facilities, or if we have a question about religious facilities in zoning, we as planners are thinking about RALUPA, which is really preempting a lot of what we can do locally. So just an example of, we get powers coming down from the federal government, but there are some restrictions.
Did you say you didn't want us to ask questions?
Madam Chair, this is your room.
It's not my room. What, that makes me think of two things. Number one, um, the proliferation of church schools. And if they, if this impacts that. And the other is the reality that churches have a lot of property.
Yes.
And it's a huge opportunity for affordable housing. And so are those two things separate from the practice of religion under the eyes of the law?
Normally, we would take that question, we would get with LDO, we would get with the city attorney's office if there was a question. We did have a, um, example of a church that had, um, a coffee shop that was part of its religious outreach and that was determined, and we're going to look at Brian. It was determined to be part of the religious facility and their outreach and not a standalone retail use. Because otherwise, the question was, is that a commercial use in a residential zone? But it was determined that it was integral to the religious, part of their religious outreach.
Interesting. So that's really interesting as we think about the Tucker project.
And so a lot of times we do try to think about, um, we do try to think about that connection between what is that religious use and how are they used in this?
And the programmatic use of the space interests.
Religious exercise is usually interpreted very broadly.
Seems to be, okay, good to know.
Um, and so that's, it's, it's partly, it is on purpose. And, um, I think that's why I just wanted to highlight, this is one of those obvious regulations that we do pay attention to. Um, and we call them religious facilities. We try to do a very generic use language on those.
Okay, cool.
Okay, so, um, we talked about those, kind of those police powers being passed down to the state. Um, and states have traditionally delegated their zoning powers to local governments. So Tennessee's, um, planning legislation, um, was patterned after model legislation drawn up by the federal government in the twenties. And, um, that was, um, in the planning legislation, Tennessee's planning legislation delegates to cities the power to adopt and enforce zoning regulations based on the concept of police powers. Again, that's at health, safety, welfare. Um, and so Tennessee, we're looking at Tennessee Code Annotated, TCA. Most of the planning, public planning is in, is in Title thirteen. So most of the references you'll see when we're referencing state law is going to have something starting with a thirteen, for the most part, that's the planning section. And that has zoning and Planning Commission information, so that's kind of the go-to chapter in the state law. Um, and then, um, granting a power to the city, so feds to state to the city, TCA thirteen seven two oh one says, "The chief legislative body of any municipality is empowered to regulate the location, height, bulk, number of stories and size of building and other structures, percentage of the lot which may be occupied." And then there's some others. So that is the grant of zoning powers. Um, and those are the things that when we talk about, um, just zoning, those are the terms generally we still use. However, the state also has limits on zoning authority. And so, um, these, they can limit, states can limit the activities that cities can regulate. And so state is preempting or exempting these, some are, all are in part from local control. So did highlight group homes for handicapped. Um, this is just something, um, really, um, the previous council had some education on. Um, and just a reminder that, um, TCA for the section takes precedent over any provision and any zoning ordinance, law or ordinance to the contrary. And this is just allowing group homes, um, to, to really function as a single-family home in a neighborhood. It's a little bit more robust than that, but, um, state law is really clear on taking any precedent over any other law. The other uses on here are wide variety. I think the shooting, sport shooting ranges came out of Hamilton County. And the continuation of non-conforming business uses came out of the city of Chattanooga. Um, and so these are exemptions that the state acted on from past history from city of Chattanooga, Hamilton County.
Karen, real quick, if any council member would like more information on how the group homes, because you have, several districts have them in, in our one, our designation, please let us know and we can follow up. That has been a point of conversation.
Yeah, I wrote that down as a question for afterwards. If you have a question.
Okay, we'll, we will do a follow-up on group.
And we even have some training on that too. And I will say, um, after being reminded of the importance of the group home exemption, the new zoning ordinance does have language that says, "The protections afforded to housing for people, to persons with disabilities under that TCA section shall apply to all residences, whether temporary or permanent." Um, and we are trying to reinforce our understanding of both, um, fair housing and that group home exemption.
Karen, I've got a question about that.
Yes, sir.
So is that, so group homes also extend to like senior living? We were seeing a trend of people using homes as an alternate to assisted living? So does that, are there exemptions under the state law that guide us on that? Or is that exempt from this?
I do, I can just read two sentences here. Um, "It provides that a home for up to eight persons with disabilities and three additional people, support staff or guardians may be maintained in any, any area zone for single-family residential use." It excludes homes operated on a commercial basis. And then it says, "A person with a disability does not include persons who have a mental illness and because of such mental illness pose a likelihood of serious harm or have been convicted of serious criminal conduct related to such mental illness." So I do believe that it would accommodate senior housing. But those are two. So sometimes they get questions, anything generally on the list or RALUPA, because those are exemptions from state law, and there is a lot of law out there about some of those items, those are questions we take back. I will say, the group home and what type of group home that is, is one that really usually takes a lot of conversation with LDO and the city attorney's office to make sure we're getting that right. Um, okay, and then so at the city, heading from state to city, Chattanooga city code, chapter thirty-eight is the zoning ordinance. So we use it, chapter thirty-eight is a zoning ordinance interchangeably, but it is, um, it is part of city code like all the other, the chapters in city code. Wanted to take a note that sometimes we talk about form-based code as if it's a separate thing. Form-based code is the zoning for downtown, North Shore, um, also the former Wheelin Side in the West Side, but it is just zoning. It is a chapter, the zoning ordinance, it's about a two-hundred-and-fifty-page chapter of the zoning ordinance in itself, but it is just, it's zoning. So when we talk about any of these zoning rules and regulations, it's applying to the form-based code, it's just a, it's just, um, a different way to do zoning, but it applies to that also. So zoning maps and changes and process, so, um, the, um, RPA, excuse me, there's a typo, um, has six divisions. Um, we're really focusing on Development Services here, Bron's division. That, um, group is meeting with applicants, communicating with stakeholders, maintaining the zoning map, maintaining all the files, processing application, staffing the Planning Commission, um, writing those resolutions coming from Planning Commission. Brian presents, um, the staff reports and facilitates that meeting. They also do subdivision plating, which is a big part of their work, which is, um, goes to Planning Commission and then do a lot of work with researching and developing staff recommendations. So Darren generated this and done why property is rezoned. I think this, um, sums up that there are a lot of reasons to rezone a property. Some are more of a short-term, immediate need of, oh, I'm doing a change in my business. It turns out I need a zoning change to allow an additional use. Some of them are a little bit longer term, particularly with large sites that have, you know, multiple years or even, you know, multiple decades of development ahead of them. And then we, um, get a lot of, I put kind of an other in there. We have a lot of specific reasons, some are very specific, I want to do this specific thing at this location. Some people are generally, give a very general description. One of the improvements we've made is now you're required to do an application narrative. So I used to put someone upon an application, "I want to do an office." Now the application narrative is a more of a form to take there, you take the time to tell, um, what you would like to do here. Sometimes that helps us with the staff report to understand better or to give them guidance. But that also has become part of the application materials, which we didn't have about two years ago, and I think that's been really helpful. Because before you kind of only knew what you could fit on the line and now you can have more information. Um, required notice, this is something that has been, um, sometimes we get questions about. It is in city code thirty-eight seventy-two, there's a notice section. Um, it includes the four items there. And so as we're talking through the process, I will kind of mention it's a mailed notice, it's a posted notice, but just to let you know, that's what we're referencing. And I'm really kind of bad with time, but I think about five or eight years ago, we had talked about it and then council at the time was interested in codifying that and saying, "We would like to put that in so we all know what the process is." Anyone looking at city code would generally know, here's the process for rezoning. And so that is in there and that's what we're following and we'll reference these some as we go through the process. It doesn't mention anything about the website, and the website is one of our main points of contact and communication. A lot of times we're sending out links to our website, um, and so I'll note that too, but that's not one of the required notices here. So this is kind of using the, working through, um, the, the process on the right. This has been kind of straddling both an application and then heading to kind of communication after an applicant's application's been filed for rezoning or lifting condition. Um, we start with Bron's team meets with applicant, processes the application, answers a lot of questions, encourages applicants to provide all the information and really getting a full application package. Um, we do encourage applicants to speak with council members and coordinate or do some sort of outreach with the neighborhood or the neighborhood association. I think, um, two weeks ago at council, there was a confirmation of, are we telling people, reminding applicants to speak with their council person and to speak with neighbors? And we have a, um, it's not a handout, it's like a little, I guess it is a handout, but now goes on all the signs. So it's shared everywhere, but now when an applicant picks up their yellow sign for rezoning, it's clipped on there to say, "Applicants are strongly encouraged," it has information about the, how to link to the neighborhood association map, um, and how to contact council members and then to call us if that doesn't work and we'll put you in contact. So it's just trying to reinforce after council reinforced with us.
This is real important. If you will notice the timeline that we have on the side, the pre-meeting and application when meeting with Brian and, and staff is, a lot of times folks will come to you and ask you your opinion on something, which is fantastic because they're engaging you, which they are also engaging their community right away. You may or may not know what the area plan recommends, may need some guidance. Pointing them into that direction, which is free of charge, to sit down and have this meeting to go over options, to kind of get a preliminary, that's what we call, to try to understand is where I would point folks to constantly. That way they can get professional advice based on our zoning code and then obviously we can follow up with that. So I cannot underscore the importance of that preliminary meeting, uh, when folks are coming to you.
When you say preliminary meeting, is that with us?
With RPA.
With RPA?
Yes, sir.
And we do not require, um, we do not require a preliminary meeting, but it's strongly encouraged. And so sometimes it's more casual. Emily Wood is the Principal Planner in Development Services and she does a lot of the heavy lifting on communicating. So, um, if someone, um, if, if council says you should call RPA, you should check, it doesn't have to be an official, I am filing an application. Some of it's like, I'm not sure what I should do or I have a zoning question, so that's helpful too.
One other question, when you say the, the application is sent to us fifteen days in advance, is that by the applicant or is it by RPA?
That's Brian. Brian, you should get an email from Brian. That's partly why, so Brian also, while we have it, the other thing Brian sends out, uh, the, um, the plaits in your, that are, um, the staff-approved subdivision plaits. Um, and this was something that Councilwoman Carol Burris was interested in getting because that shows a reflection of activity in a neighborhood. So if someone's like, they're doing something, sometimes you can look at the zoning rundown that Bron sends, there's a yellow sign, and sometimes the plat list, and he sends out every month, because that's not something we would, um, it'd be hard to find elsewhere because it's kind of going on beneath the scenes. But Bron is the one sending those out.
So.
And one thing we're exploring too on the yellow sign that goes up is putting a QR code, basically wants to go up and scan the sign towards our website and see what's going on.
So a practical suggestion of what, it's like, when I get that email from Brian, the, the applications can be really long, it can be a two-hundred-and-fifty-page document. So he sends a rundown that's in Excel and the first thing I do is I look and I look for the, there's a county district and there's a city district. So I go down and I'm looking for District Two. And I make a note of what those case numbers are and then I can search in that PDF, the other one, and get to the file. Is a way for me to at least see, okay, here's the application, because they don't always give you in advance. And that doesn't always mean that I feel like I need to act at that point, but at least I'm aware of the situation.
And that also is a true, I'm going to flip back, that is coming from this, um, oh gosh, this coming from this notification, which says, um, that last one, the next to last one there is that the applications were afforded to council members fifteen days prior. Bron is trying to get that out to you as soon as possible. That's really where that's coming from. It's a good practice, but also it's kind of on our checklist to do.
And that's the application, that's not the decision.
That's right.
That's for the recommendation. And those recommendation and decision are two different things.
Um, and then for, so for stakeholders, just anyone interested, we're notifying the neighborhood association contact that there's an application. Mail-written notices to property owners abutting the property and we're posting application materials to the web. We used to wait, um, until we had the full staff report and start to populate our web, our webpage. But people need information before that and so we are trying to populate the, as soon as we have an application, starting to push that out through the web so people are able to go on there and look and see if there's anything of interest. And we are, another improvement we're looking at, is there a better way to do the mapping on our website? So if I just wanted to see all the zoning cases in my neighborhood and the status, that's a future improvement we're working on hopefully for this year. Um, and then, so with neighbors, and this is really, again stakeholders, a lot of times this is a neighborhood or neighborhood association. And this are, we want it, we do encourage input. And so a lot of times these are questions about how do I, how do, how do I get the word out, that I'm interested or give feedback on a case. You can email Regional PC, this would be to anyone interested in giving input to Planning Commission. We do not, um, have them in contact and in. We do not, um, have them in contact an individual planning commissioner. The intention is that all planning commissions getting that same communication. And then, um, we combine that into spreadsheet and share that at planning commission. So, um, sometimes that council, uh, will say, um, we had email in opposition. This is where that's coming from. There's also an online form. You can go in and just do a form. Um, um, just, we're trying to give people different ways to do it. We also encourage people to come to planning commission, city council, contact your council member. And we also ask, we answer a lot of questions and sharing information. So some cases obviously have, um, more involvement from the residents, neighborhoods. So some of what you see here, we would, we work into a different handout or we're trying to, um, share information. So we do spend a lot of time communicating and coordinating, um, with anyone interested in the case.
So, I, I get this question a lot and it's a difficult answer for me to give. So maybe you can shed some light on this, uh, for me to answer. What is the difference between RPA and planning commission and who is staff? Who are these entities made up of? How is that determined? I know that's a lot of questions in one, but.
Great. That in, um.
Your timing is perfect.
Yes, and I appreciate the question. Um, so it made it, it made it more confusing because the planning agency and planning agency staff used to also be called the regional planning commission. And I think somewhere in the eighties or nineties, they broke it up.
Oh, okay.
Planning commission is that appointed body. Um, there are 15, I'll, I want to talk about the staff recommendation. So planning commission is appointed, planning agency are your professional planning staff. And so we are, um, we are, um, you know, on the city's payroll. We are staff members. The planning commission is an appointed body that meets once a month or more if they're busy. Um, and so, but that is a great question. We try to be very, very clear on, um, because we get a lot of questions about you, about planning agency staff and like, we are just here to do the work. And so. Um, and then also communication coordination. The RPA staff recommendation is, um, or the staff reports, um, is the, our communication about the case. And so we meet, um, planning staff meets once a month in an afternoon and we review all the cases that are on the upcoming planning commission agenda. Um, some of them take a lot longer to review than others. Some cases we really spend a series of several days over. Um, and that, the, our intention is to review all the recommendations. Sometimes we have our partners there. Um, sometime we've gotten feedback from them already and to come up with our draft staff recommendation, which then we refine. Emily Wood, I've mentioned before, does a lot. Emily is, um, right now the one taking the lead on staff recommendations and walking us through those so we can have a good discussion. That's where we're reviewing all the information we have today from the applicant, the plan, to come up with that staff recommendation. Um, and this is posted on our website 10 days prior to the planning commission meeting and it is emailed to an applicant. So we do, there's a lot of interest from an applicant in getting that staff recommendation because that usually prepares their talking points for planning commission, which should be, um, about seven business days away. And we do try to stick pretty closely to that deadline, um, because we know it's important. We also post to the web, um, and so hopefully the applications have already been posted and then there's a line for the staff recommendation. Um, so, and we try to kind of keep that on that same timeframe so everyone knows generally when they're posted.
And I'll add that the staff recommendation is very methodical. I mean, staff are charged with following the law that the council has passed. So the zoning ordinance that we passed, the, the RPA, their team is looking at that law to determine, and the plan for that area, that area plan, which eventually will be planned Chattanooga, to compare. So, for example, um, when I sat on planning commission, we had cases where somebody wanted to make a duplex. And it was not in the area plan that there was a desire for duplexes in that area. And it was also, there was not zoning precedent for a duplex. And so staff within their scope would say, well, we don't recommend a duplex here. However, a way you could get to your solution would be to have a single-family home with an ADU. And they might provide some information. But if that wasn't an option, before that was an option, they would have just said, no, this is not appropriate. And so then planning commission has greater discretion than staff. So that's important for your constituents to understand. Staff are paid by taxpayers to enforce the law, to recommend based on the law.
And we talked about implementing zoning as a tool to implement the city's plan. So that adopted plan from city council is the city vision for future development. And we are referencing that as planners. We are using the information. We're referencing the plan. That is the adopted vision, council's adopted vision and the community's vision. And so we're using that as a reference point. So, um, in staff review, we talk about, we're not creating new policy. We do try to inform and know that planning commission might want to give a different recommendation.
Which is why also you'll see recommendations come through and you'll see a recommendation to deny from staff at planning commission. I don't want to steal, um, your thunder here, but then you'll see the planning commission have a different recommendation coming on to city council.
That's correct. And I will just go through state law and then turn it over to Chris. So the regional planning commission, again, looking at that chapter 13 in TCA, which is the public planning. Um, so regional planning commissions and municipal planning commissions have very similar rules and regulations. Basically it's a function to have a plan, um, to have a, a plan to reference, right? We are not, we're not being, just making a decision on each property. We're referencing that general, that general plan. And then also just noting the zoning ordinance and maps, um, must be submitted to and approved by the planning commission prior to going to the chief legislative body. So again, state laws telling us what we can do here and referencing that. And then, do you cover? Great.
And the planning commission is made up of 15 members. There are seven from the county, seven from the city. And then a chair who is jointly appointed, uh, by the, uh, the mayors of, of Hamilton County and the city of Chattanooga. Of those seven city and seven county, there is, well, both mayors are members of the planning commission. Both mayors, I have seen both of the current mayors attend and participate in planning commission. I believe Mayor Kelly has been, he's been the three where he has sat for the planning commission. Um, I've seen Mayor Wong, I believe at least twice come into planning commission. So they do, they do it enough to get the experience, know what it is and understand it. They typically, because of time constraints, because the meetings are long.
Long.
They send a designee. I'm Mayor Kelly's designee and Nathan Janeway at the county is the designee for Mayor Wong. Yes, Councilman.
I don't want to be litigious when I ask this question, but you know, items will go through the planning commission. But ultimately the final say is with the body, less with the body. What is the utility of a planning commission? Not trying to say I'm trying to take out a planning commission, so don't.
Well, we're required to have one by state law.
Okay.
So, so you see, the council can't do that. So the role of planning commission is kind of the intermediate, intermediary role between staff who are bound by very strict rules and regulations with, to some extent.
When you say staff, city staff?
RPA staff, the regional planning agency staff who work for Karen. So they're got, they have stricter constraints than the 15 people who can exercise judgment a little more and almost to the extent that you can and that you've got 15 people, hopefully from different industries and viewpoints coming together to make a collective decision. We don't have a ton of closely divided votes, maybe one a month. Um, most, most of the cases are pretty obvious going one way or the other. But they provide that level of, we can question the applicants in the room. Uh, we can collaborate on sometimes create, maybe somebody has applied for this zone over here, but then they get to the podium and they start talking about what they're going to do. And they actually would be fine with this less intense zone. So one of us will say, hey, you know, would you be okay with this? Because we can also say, you applied for, you know, CX and we're going to give you UA or RA. So that, that's kind of the role we can play is a little bit of.
I'm gonna say screening, almost, and vetting.
Yeah, yeah, kind of.
Okay.
And it is a public hearing. So that's one of the things, the staff, we are taking all the information we know. But at planning commission, um, there might be seven people there in opposition that would give it. So some of it might be an example of like, oh no, they, they, um, that, this is an example. That duplex has been converted to a single-family home. Or, um, yeah, um, there trash compactor is right next to my house and it's really loud. Like they give information to either help modify a decision or maybe a condition is added to address some of those impacts that the public have been speaking to.
Okay. Provide context to the, to the area that we, we wouldn't know about or they wouldn't know about.
And that's a pretty robust, not all cases have, um, opposition. Um, but there, it is a, somewhere from like a two to four, five-hour meeting. There's just a lot of opposite, a lot of discussion there.
We had one seven-hour meeting a year before.
Well, y'all aren't selling it, but what I was gonna say was, you know, in the past, like Darren Ledford served on the council for several years and represented us on the planning commission, which allowed him to develop expertise. But I would suggest that if, as you all are seeing cases come across, I know for me, when I served a year on the planning commission, it was a great, there was work involved and I learned a lot about this process. So I'd encourage you to think about, um, for next year, if you'd be interested in being that person unless, unless Councilmember Burris puts her flag in the air. But, I mean, I think it's a really useful thing in the same way that I think other committees, you know, it makes sense for them to move around some.
To Chairwoman Hill's point, you know, Councilman Clark, you came to a planning commission meeting and were there for quite a long time. So you got to see quite a few cases because there was one, uh, very notable case in your district that was being discussed. Uh, and I, and I hope that was a good experience for you. I think it's a good experience for anybody on the council to at least attend one and see. Uh, there's usually one or two county commissioners there who are not on the dais and sometimes there's one or two city council people. Uh, I stopped to answer your question, but the other, the other automatic city and county reps are, uh, as, as Chairwoman Hill alluded to, the chair of planning and zoning from the city council. Although you can send whoever you want, according to state law. It just has to be a representative from the city council and the county commission. Commissioner Mike Chauncey from District Eight is usually the commission representative. If he's not there, they send Commissioner Highlander sometimes. Commissioner Graham has sat a couple of times. So there's some flexibility there, you know. Right now, Councilwoman Burris has agreed to serve in that role for a year, which is very time-intensive. Um, and if, if she wasn't there for a month, you know, one of the other eight could go. So it's a little flexible there. And Karen talked about opposition a little bit. I want to talk about this, the structure. So the way the meetings run is the, the first hour is the least eventful hour or so because we're going through plaits, uh, which is chopping up land into buildable lots. And we are the final step for that, to answer your question further, Councilman Elliott. Uh, plaits end at the planning commission. They are approved, denied or deferred to planning commission. And we, now we have very strict guidelines under which we have to approve plaits or not that come from state law. Then we go to rezones and if there is opposition, the opposition, just like here at city council, is entitled to nine minutes to speak. Uh, the applicant gets seven and two, just like here, the, the times are mirrored. Uh, and a lot of information comes out in those, in those discussions when people come to the podium. And, uh, the chair, Ethan Collier, always reminds people, you know, hey, I see there's 10 of you. You have nine, you have nine minutes collectively, so don't let the first person speak for five minutes or, you know, the other people won't get time. But it really is an opportunity to have those public conversations, Councilman Davis.
Yeah, so if there's folks who are opposed, but they're not able to make the meeting, is there a mechanism for, like if they send an email or a phone call to make that part of the record?
Yeah, the, if you email or submit feedback through an online form, that goes to a spreadsheet that Emily downloads on Monday morning before planning commission. And we present it planning commission. So a lot of times Brian will say during the presentation of like, and we've got three emails in opposition. They're on your sheet. And so, um, it's usually a summary of the concerns, of, you know, flooding access, whatever. And then sometimes those people come, but that is the intention of that, is to make sure that gets to planning commission. And it doesn't just go to a, you know, it just doesn't like, you know, just go to staff.
And the staff does a great job of putting it in front of every planning commissioner. Even if it comes in the morning of the meeting, Emily will come in and she'll hand us all like, hey, we have a few more emails. I mean, they are really, really receptive to getting those comments and making sure that we see them just as if a person was in the room. Because just like here at city council, the only way to contact your rep is not to stand at the podium for three minutes. There are many other ways that you can get their opinions to us. And then it moves on to city council or county commission?
Never heard of them.
Never.
Um, I'll move quickly because I think we're running a little bit behind. After planning commission, um, we are, um, we post the planning commission action to the web. We usually answer a lot of questions from people who call after planning commission. And the office's city attorney, Maria Manella, in their office, who's, um, just wonderful, prepares, um, takes the information and prepares the ordinances and resolutions for council. Um, we started under, um, Darren, as when he was planning a zoning chair, we started sending out RPA staff notes prior to planning a zoning committee. That's just to give you an update about, did the case have opposition? What was opposition? Has anything else come up? Um, kind of as a one-page or fourcommittee and I highlight those cases that had opposition and that I plan on discussing, but I'm happy to discuss any case.
But if I could stop you real quick, I want to give due credit where credit is due. And that is, uh, from our esteemed chairwoman, who actually reformulated that in my absence while I served as chair. And I, uh, kept the, uh, the flame lit, so to speak, and have thanked her multiple times for that, for that.
Saves us a lot of time.
It saves a lot of time.
That's great. And I, and any feedback on that is, um, welcome. So usually that would be right before, um, planning and zoning committee. Um, if something else comes up or there's a lot of activity, I might send an update to that. But that, um, because it's been about three weeks between planning commission, sometimes ca, planning commission will give a stern warning or some advice to an applicant to continue to work with a neighbor, reach out to your council person. Sometimes there's been some activity, um, between, um, planning commission and councils. That process continues. Um, and then council, um, again, TCA's speaking to it. It says zoning ordinance and the maps, both the document and the maps can be amended. Um, but it is, um, it is, if, um, submitted and approved by, um, the chief legislative body. And then this is the normal process. I'll move quickly because we've got some important stuff coming up. Um, I will note, first reading and final, I will note that, um, if a case is denied at city council, if county, if city council denies a case, not planning commission, because that comes up, it is nine months following a denial, um, before we can accept another application. And so not nine months before it can heard by council, nine months before it can be heard by planning commission, we cannot accept an application. So oftentimes what I see council do will say, just a reminder, it sounds like there's not a lot of support for your case. Um, and then, um, I can volunteer that nine months, there will be no application. Um, and so a lot of times an applicant will choose to withdraw, um, and which is fine too. Otherwise we, um, we don't have a lot of denials that meet this, but otherwise we track it. And very few people come in right at nine months, but we've had one or two that are counting down. Um, and then just lastly, and kind of the full process enforcement is done by land development office. Um, they're really wonderful to work with. Now I've already, um, mentioned, um, Councilwoman Carol Burris once. I'll mention again during the development of the new zoning ordinance. She really reinforced the need to, um, coordinate with enforcement. Why are we writing these rules and regulations if we're not going to enforce them? Um, and during the new zoning ordinance, we worked with LDO and we have settled on to a once-weekly meeting with LDO and RPA. Bron and I sat in on those along with LDO about anything that's come up on a complicated zoning matter. We're not certain, are we in line with each other? Um, and we've institutionalized enough now, we can tell people at our Thursday meeting, we'll talk about it. And folks are usually willing to wait knowing that that's an outcome of that. And then we just determine who's going to communicate. We did do a joint, um, kind of, um, to, I think two now, joint position papers. So both LDO and RPA are saying the same thing and we both can post those to our website and share that website. And then.
It's always good to, to check for enforceable conditions if you are applying them to a zoning case, especially from the dais or from the floor. Um, you may think that's a condition sounds reasonable to you, but you would probably want to do that legwork ahead of time to make sure that it passes the legal sniff test, so to speak.
Yeah, great point. Also, it helps, um, to have clarity. Um, I, I think we had one case, it was before you guys were elected, but with the new zoning code and there were like 17 or 18 conditions on it and it was very confusing. Uh, and so we had to whoa, whoa, whoa and, and go back. So as much as we love to amend from the floor, we are very good at that.
Learn from, learn from it, right?
Um, this is, and the next here is just coun, council decision-making. Um, this is in, um, Chairwoman Hill already spoke to this. There are, um, I'm just gonna read it. I think it's important. City council decision on any zoning text or map amendment is a matter of legislative discretion that is not controlled by any particular criteria. But we do have some criteria in the zoning ordinance laid out there and those are what we put in a staff report or I might speak to, um, during review of a case. So an example might be like, this is in line with the plan. This conflicts with the plan. However, there's other language from the plan or, um, it is compatible with the nearby uses. Or example, planning commission is recommended condition to help address that incompatibility. And so that's where this language is coming from. And that, um, when you get the presentation, there's, um, there'll be a PDF link there just linking to that section. And so, that's where this language is coming from, and that, when you get the presentation, there's, there'll be a PDF link there, just linking to that section. It gives a little guidance, and then...
But, the attorney would also say to us, while it is in our discretion and not controlled by any particular criteria, we also are bound by the law to not be capricious, or what's the other word?
Arbitrary.
Arbitrator.
Arbitrator.
It's like we've had a vote.
You're already here, right.
Okay.
Right, and this is leading up to exactly that.
You guys are great.
And, I will, actually, we can come back to conditions, that's probably a good point, and Andrew, I'll just move over to you, and then I can always come back. And I'll just, you can tell me next slide.
Yeah, I mean, essentially, when, a, a, what is termed, an aggrieved party can appeal a zoning decision by the, by the council, which is similar to how a, you know, if the Board of Zoning Appeals or another city, city board is, someone's unhappy with the decision, they can do the same thing. And the, the reviewing court is going to look and see if the, the council's acted under, acted arbitrarily and capriciously. That's essentially going to be, you know, is it illegal, which is, you know, is it violate Realupa, or Fair Housing Act, or any of the state laws? Arbitrary is, you know, if the council is approving every third, you know, application or something like that. If there seems to be some sort of personal bias, either the applicant spurned you, or wouldn't talk with you, or they're really friendly with you, and, you know, it just seems to be based on that rather than the merits, or if there's any sort of fraud, or exceeding the council's jurisdiction, which is, which is set by law. And essentially, you know, it, it's a high standard on appeal, which means, you know, the, the court is more likely than not going to affirm a decision unless it is, you know, wholly unsupported by the record. And basically, so if there's any evidence that a reasonable mind might accept adequate, as adequate to support a rational conclusion, but it does have to be something on the record, so if, you know, I, I know in past hearings, there have been discussions of like, oh, I wish you'd come and talk with me before, and things like that, but, and that's, well, you know, all well and good to say during a meeting, but, you know, it's also important to say like, I wish we had more information, or, you know, there's opposition from the community, or this is an issue that we're concerned about, and so, you know, things that are, you know, just any some reason for, for why you are approving or denying a case, is good to, to get out there on the record during the meeting. And then, I believe the vested voting rights, do we want to touch on that now, or go back to, okay? Or vested property rights, excuse me. The vested property rights act of 2014, essentially, there is a, a point very early on in development, usually with the approval of a, of a plat, or a development plan, or something along those lines, that developers essentially has the right to proceed with that development, even if there are, you know, the, the new zoning code went, went in force, or something along those lines, it, it would not change the fact that they already have the right to proceed with that development under the then requirements of the code, the building codes and the zoning codes and everything else. And that's essentially just because we don't want to, people to invest huge amounts of money, and then, six months into their project, they're told, well, actually, we've changed this law, so it's no longer available. And generally, those are worth, you know, the vesting property right lasts for at least three years. It can be extended in, in certain circumstances. And it vests upon the approval of a subdivision plat, either preliminary or final, and as well as special exception permits, or, or for a PUD, and I believe the... I think those are mainly, and now, every now and then, they will, someone may request to make an amendment to their, to their, to their plan, and those can be evaluated as to whether or not it alters the proposed use, or increases the, the overall area of the development. If it alters the size of, of structures, especially non-residential structures, if it increases the density, and especially if it increases the, the local government expenditures, you know, if it goes from, you know, two houses an acre to six houses an acre, then, you know, that, that's certainly a reason that you may deny a, a request to rezone and amend a, a plan. I believe that's all.
Andrew, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
The vested property rights, obviously, we're talking about amended, or Title 13, which is moving into TCA. That covers a building permits and LDPs, right?
Yes.
In the state law, the language in the zoning ordinance is pretty much a cut and paste of state law. The only thing we were able to do in 2014 is you could come up with those lists of things that vest, and so, we were trying to... And so, the any other approval or issuance specified is kind of like, or whatever state law cha- whatever state law specifies.
I have this question for you. PUDs are, I know, they're relatively new. Do we have, or does your office have any type of a mechanism, I know you do your pre-meetings, but like, criteria? I know it's kind of oxymoron with a PUD, but, like, to walk developers through how to do it properly. You know, Councilman Clark had one, that was in his district, and it was just all over a cluster, but you know, I, I can imagine it probably going to be more common. Do you, do you guys have anything like that in place for developers yet?
You're right, in that the, the PUD that we have now is very new to us. We do have older PUDs, but they're so different from the new process, speaking specifically about the new process, we did not. There is more robust language in the ordinance, and, and one of them is that you could just get, you could, you're supposed to come in for a preview meeting, you could even go to planning commission and get some feedback on that, on the, without it binding you. But we did come up with some process improvements, because the recent PUD was our first one. It was pretty major under, you know, for a new development under that new proposal. But we did come up with some process improvements, or what we can do differently, and Emily, you, we should have had, probably Emily come, created a flowchart of all these steps, and that was to get the applicant through the process, to communicate with the neighborhood, and to help us as staff, because you can read the whole thing, but still helpful to go through. And so, we did, after going through that, we might draft a PUD amendment, just after looking at, going through the whole thing and saying, okay, that was new to, is there something we can do differently next time? But yes, we do have a handout, and then, that one is a good example of, we did try to communicate with neighbors and put some information together that was a little bit easier to understand, because just reading the PUD regulations can be tough.
Yeah. Great, thank you so much.
Good question.
And then, one of the things I'll note here is that staff too is, is, doesn't want to be arbitrary and capricious. And so, part of our, two things, one is that the staff report, where we're talking about all those things that, that are the existing use of property, what does the plan say? All those are intending to give information to council for actionable items to discuss. What is the surrounding hit land use, all of that is intended to make sure, and we're helping provide that base of information, so something isn't arbitrary, capricious. And then also, I think one thing that we've learned over time, and it's a really clean process, is important. So we are appreciative to have all the steps in the zoning ordinance, and we try to really, really follow those steps, because we've, I'll speak to Bron too. We found out, once you start to go outside of that really clean process, that's when things start to get rushed, we might miss something, or we start to have a problem where maybe we didn't quite do what we're supposed to. And so, those two things are what we're trying to assist with, to make sure that we don't have an arbitrary, capricious, or where someone says, I, something didn't happen correctly, because we, that is important to us too.
And moving forward, Karen, we're happy to talk more about zoning philosophy and, in regards to the process, to make sure, because one thing we're not mentioning here, and I think it's on purpose, is the by right that falls within a certain zone. We get into property rights, obviously, we talked a little bit about vested, but as far as the zoning philosophy and, and understanding what those rights are, it's probably a different conversation, but definitely one that we're happy to, to build upon.
And I think we have a slide that, I think that's a great point. Just to note, zoning, again, we have the map, the book itself, the zoning ordinance, and the zoning map. I think just to highlight, and you've seen it on several of these slides, final action is by Chattanooga City Council. Planning commission staff is recommending, providing a recommendation and information. Planning commission is providing a recommendation, but zoning action is by, final action is by Chattanooga City Council. And then I know, we are probably out of time, I'll just take two, three minutes on zoning conditions. Zoning conditions are also given to us as a power by the state. At the time that Hamilton County and its jurisdictions got the ability to do zoning conditions in 1986, we're the only county in the state that had that ability to do that. And so, it's a little bit of an outlier when we talk to our fellow planners, but just, and there's a, there's a population range, but basically, you're authorized to rezone properties conditionally. Conditions are desired to ameliorate injuries created by the rezoning to a surrounding property interest or to municipal interest. And so, that's why, just some zoning condition best practices, this is just kind of coming from staff, ameliorating injuries. So some examples to me would be, there needs to be a greater buffer, where there's a parking lot next to residential structure. Hopefully, we've addressed all these in the zoning code, but it could be there needs to be a fence. Or it could be that oftentimes, I've seen where it's a drive-through, was near to the neighborhood, and the condition is that the drive-through needs to be away from the neighborhood, located on the other side of the building. So that's kind of noise nuisances, activity, light, those are all things that are, are being, that are mitigating the impact of that, that new zone. It's just, and it's tied to the property zoning, so the property zoning stays with the property, those conditions are with that zoning. We, as you know, have been mentioned several times, we have our new zoning ordinance, our new zoning map. All the old conditions that councils approved since 1986 have moved over. So conditions are still on place with the new zoning, and that was reiterated repeatedly through the process. And I think, I have not talked to anyone who's not aware of that, but we, conditions did move over. We do encourage, to the point of reviewing conditions with LDO for enforcement, we do have some more standard conditions, or we reference language that's in the zoning ordinance. If an additional buffer is needed, we don't need to rewrite what that language would look like, we can reference something. But we, if we're not sure, we will coordinate with LDO to make sure it's enforceable. You can always lift those conditions, and then, they are enforced by LDO through the development process. I believe they add a process change where you have to specifically address how you are addressing conditions in your development.
So, no, go ahead, ask your question.
Can you put, are we restricted by state law to put, to go back and put conditions on something that's already been zoned?
There would be, the only way to do that would be for council to say, we are going to rezone property and place, we are going to place conditions on that property. We have not seen, I've not seen that in my time, I'm not aware of that happening at Chattanooga. But there's two ways that property can get reza- that can initiate rezoning of a property, one's a property owner, the other is Chattanooga City Council, but that is a robust process, when I can just skip to that.
Talk about all this, yeah, Karen, can you talk about what's required for city council to rezone somebody's property again?
Sure, and this is, this is one paragraph on the slide, but, because we get a lot of who can request rezoning of the property. Chattanooga, so this is kind of a multi-point test here, council can, the, and then, I will say this, this here, the way I've seen it done. Upon an official request, that council, Chattanooga City Council's requesting that, we usually combine that with a robust study, with a lot of public process, we will, and then I'll, I'll give an example. And then, it's often to implement council adopted plans. And so, an example would be in South Broad, prior to the new zoning ordinance, actually, South Broad, North of the Creek and South of the Creek, we, Chattanooga City Council requested the regional planning agency to do a zoning study by resolution, requested staff. And then, we did, one case, I think we wrote the zone into the study, another case, we looked at all the properties south of the creek, including, there was a lot of manufacturing zone property, and it was intended to implement the plan. So a lot of the public meetings are about, we have a plan that's been adopted, this is an area transitioning away, we're interested in a lot of urban development form, we're not taking away your right to keep your property manufacturing, but this, and then, lots of public meetings, then that recommendation to rezone property went to planning commission, and then comes back to city council for action. So that is most, it is usually a larger area to implement a plan, but it's requested by council, and then, we take, we as staff take on that process to do that work.
Chairwoman Hill, I think you had a question.
Well, I was, I was, I was going to give just some practical experience about conditions and how they come about, so, and, and with that, like, if you have a project that's come, an application that's coming across your desk, and you've gotten feedback, or for whatever reason, you're looking at it, and the conditions that are in the recommendation from planning commission are not the same as what you think are going to be appropriate, then you can work with Karen and say, like, for example, you might say, we're gonna, we can condition this to C2, but I don't want a car wash, or whatever. You know, there might be a handful of things that are not appropriate in that, in that new zone. And so Karen can look at the zoning code and what language already exists that she can match, so it's legally a standard. And she can provide that to you, and actually go ahead and be, if we need, then legal can actually make an alternate version. And so, that alternate version, but we need to do it in advance of the meeting ideally, but the alternate version would appear on the agenda. And so, we would have the clerk read the alternate version instead of the planning commission version. Those kind of things need to happen about a week in advance to get the alternate version onto the agenda.
Because that happened with the case where there was an alternate version, and I was confused about that, because you took, we took it as a group, so we're not actually, when we ungroup it, we have to vote on each one of those?
So, we will sometimes group items that only need one vote, like a resolution, we will sometimes group. And then, planning items on second read, once they, if something's already passed on first read, we will group them, because typically, things don't change from first read to second read. And so, if we pass the alternate version on the first read, then that's what moves into the agenda for the second read, to be read, because that's what has passed.
And there's key words, I'm sorry, ma'am, Chair, subject to certain conditions, look for that at the very end.
Yeah, I'll have, we're, like, clicking through and reading that. And then the other thing about rezoning property at the city's choice, not at the applicant's request. When we did the new zoning map, staff worked really diligently to do equivalency mapping. And what I would say to all of the people in my district was, you will not lose property rights, you may gain property rights. Because in Tennessee, obviously, you have very strong personal property, private property rights. And so, something like eminent domain, or changing somebody's property right, like taking away rights, is the fighting words, I think they would call that. We've had a couple.
The continuation of non-conforming business uses, that came out of a case, I think, in the city of Chattanooga, but it basically continued with the state saying, okay, if you were zoned previously, you were zoned for use, and you could do that use, and then the zoning changed and took away that use, you can still continue that business and expand your business even. So that's a state restriction that is, that is out there, that takes away the city's ability to, if you change a zoning, and so, an example might be, if there's a gas station, the new zoning ordinance did not allow a gas station, that gas station could still continue that use and develop, it is like, and there's some language in the zoning ordinance.
And the reason why I asked that question about what the city can request, is that because I have two churches in my area that are zoned, I think we've discussed this, that are somewhat residential, maybe because of the partridge, but they're, everything around it is commercial. And so, we're trying to figure out, like, were they a part of some type of exemption, if the partridge is there, or do...
Well, you, you, I think, I'm not sure if you were here at the very beginning, we learned something, I learned something, that it could be part of that, is the, what'd you call it, the huzmub? The, there's a fancy name for it, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. I had never heard of that.
And luckily, I've been inundated with a bunch of these, so I've had, I've had this, I've had this crash course like, every week with Karen.
Oh, yeah.
But specifically, is, you know, I'm wondering how we bring those, because what, what will happen if they're zoned residential and that church sells, that I've got a... would happen if there's own residential and that church sells, that I've got a residential parcel in the middle of everything commercial? And so I guess at one point, we had churches with partridge, partridgees on it, that allowed for this residential type, but now they don't exist, the churches are not operable and they want to sell, and I could potentially have a residential plot in the middle of, like, Highway 58 because of that. And so that's why I was asking, would that be an example of us being able to, the city council coming back and saying, hey, not, this is not in our plan for this area, and there's not anything that's around it that supports that residential? Would that be an example of using that city council authority to change the zone, or...
I will give a best practice example, I was trying to fill. I will give, my observation is that larger studies implementing a plan where it's multiple properties, I, it, I've seen, the challenges I'm aware of, when it's one city property has been, is being addressed one property, that is when the challenge, is not, the challenge does not survive. When councils survive, res zones one property and pills out one property to do something with, that seems less successful in court than multiple properties. And that's not, that is me as a planner observation, that's not legalized.
But depending on like the goal, if, like to use Highway 58 as the example, if there's a residential and everything else is going commercial, that's for the area plan to recommend, and then the council, the city council to decide, just because there's this one residential piece, doesn't mean we're not going to rezone this, the rest of this around it. Like, then they could become, they could apply to become commercial at some point. But you might decide, as the representative for this area, I understand that you might not want commercial all around you, but that's the way this is going, and we're going to go that way, and then you're going to be like that little house in Up.
Yeah. And that's exactly what's about to happen.
And then your property value's going to go through the roof, you're going to sell your 1,400 square foot house for a commercial price, right? Like, and then your kid goes to college.
I think too, I think this is a great timing, this is, I think, the last slide, but zoning does go with the land, and so if you're interested in how did something come about, in that case, we did some research for you, if there's an interest about how this come about, we can go into our records and pull, like, you know, what was the history on that, why did that happen? We can also give kind of a guess, but, you know, when we talk, think about zoning, you know, some of these decisions are made in the, you know, the 1950s, 1960s, and so a lot of that, we've done wide swaths of zoning studies in areas of the city over time, we've changed the zoning, but this is just a reminder on some of, and these are really kind of planner observations, again, that the developer might agree to something in a meeting, but if it's not in a ordinance, if it's not a city ordinance, or if it's not in a condition, there's nothing tying anyone to that. And so just a, if there's something that is important, that needs to be a part of that zoning, I would recommend it become a condition. We do see that a lot, because developers can take over the project, the property owner can change, nothing might happen for 20 years. And then just as a note, that site plans are provided as part of application materials, but future development could look different. A lot of times, you know, retail development, by the time you get your access points and meet your setbacks, you don't have a lot of options, but something in that, like a larger site, something like different might happen.
Meeting with transportation could alter that.
Right, and so there are just a very general representation, sometimes it does, that is, someone knows enough about what they're doing, that is the final plan, but just a caveat on site.
And in a planned unit development, though, that site plan is gold and locked in. So that's very key to understand. So, respecting your time, Madam Chair, Madam Chair of Planning and Zoning, thank you for your time. Andrew, Karen, Valerie, Pam, Brian, thank you for being here. If you have any further questions, I'm sure that you might, that we are always available to answer them, and feel free to call us anytime. And Karen, this was fantastic, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate the work you did.
Thank you, Darren.
And we'll see you in just a few minutes.
Fantastic.